Calling to order, the Needham Select Board meeting for December 6th. Greetings to everybody. The first item on the agenda I will just mention is public comment. I have not been told that there are any public comments this evening. All right, if there are none, I want to just make a couple of announcements as we start. The first one, I'm going to announce it's Matt's birthday. We're going to say thank you to Matt for coming with us tonight.
Welcome to 30 back.
Absolutely. It's never felt so good, Marcus.
Nice to have you here.
Never felt so good.
He told me there were sprinkles in his coffee earlier, and so we are going to wish him all the best for that. There is an update on the Foster property, so I do just want to let people know that that is the case. The purchase and sale agreement has been fully executed now, and it went into effect on December 1st. That triggers a 60-day due diligence period through the end of January, which may be extended for an additional 15 days. So I just wanted to let people know that it is finally signed. I know that has been an item that all of us have been waited, waiting for, deeply disappointed on numerous occasions that it wasn't signed yet. We do anticipate that there will be a meeting set up with the neighbors. We are hoping to know what the date of that meeting is within a week, and we will let the neighbors know when that meeting is as soon as we do know. So something will be coming. Information about that meeting will be going out to the email list that the town has set up, and I flagged that for people because if you know somebody in that neighborhood, we'd sent 60 letters to local neighbors, but we in fact only have 20 emails. So I can either conclude that the neighbors are not that concerned about the project or interested. I don't actually think that's the case, all right? But they have not yet provided their email so that they can be on the list to be notified easily about what's going on with the project. So that will be good. So we look forward to providing more information and having more discussion with the community soon. All right, the first item after public comment is a public hearing. It is an alteration of premises for an all alcohol license for a hotel, The Heights, and what I want to say this evening is that that hearing, the applicant has requested that we continue the hearing to January 10th, 2023. If I could have a motion from someone on the board to continue that hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, it is unanimous. Thank you. The second public hearing is for a transfer of an alcohol license for Needham Center Fine Wines. So if we could have our applicant come forward, please. And I think we have Mr. Levin and Mr. Patel here. If I can turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alan Levin. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Shiv May LLC, and also the manager of that corporation, Mr. Patel. This is, we're looking to transfer a liquor license from the previous owner, which is ASP Convenience. Okay. The business will be doing business as Needham Center Fine Wines. Mr. Patel, he, he's, I tell you that he is tip certified. He's the manager and owner of six other liquor licenses, a VPS Convenience Incorporated in Quincy, ASP Convenience in Holbrook, Vancha LLC in Milford, Redraxy Incorporated in New Bedford, and then two in Boston, a Shiv Vanch LLC and a PN Liquors LLC. Mr. Patel is a citizen. He is tip certified. He is aware and capable of following all the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the ABCC, and the town of Needham as it's in connection with alcohol sales and delivery. Mr. Patel has been in the liquor sale business since he's been 18, since he was 18 years old. He's 42 years old now. He has no previous incidents or issues. And if you have any questions for him, he can answer them for you.
And, and the actual manager of the store?
Will be Mr. Patel.
Will be Mr. Patel.
So he is, while he is the owner of the other liquor licenses. Those businesses have been business for years. There are others who are, or will be operating that. He's going to be dedicating his time to this operation.
Is there anything else you would like to tell us?
Yeah, so I've been, I've been owning these stores almost over, some stores over 10, 15 years, and I have a really good assistant, people who's, who's running with me. Those stores for a long time. And the way I have all set up right now, it's, I don't have to spend as much, as much as time what I, what I used to spend in those stores. So that's the reason I move forward with this, this location. And this is, I live like 10 minutes away from here, so I can be here within like two minutes, no problem.
So that's good to be close. I'll just check with the town manager. Is everything in order with the application?
Yes.
And are there questions from members of the board?
Madam Chair, thank you. So as one of the elder members here who was around when liquor licenses came into town, we had double the amount of applicants that we had, that we could give licenses to. And we were very selective, and we, we saw this application for the business that you're going to acquire. It's in a prominent location, and the goods that he had, Chris had beside him, liquor was high-end liquor, and it was some cheeses and meats. And I remember we did a field trip, so to speak, to his other location and saw the quality business that he ran, and were very comfortable kind of putting him in the running and eventually giving him a liquor license. So I just hope, I'm assuming that you're going to run kind of the same type of liquor and business that he had established. And I wish you the best of luck, but kind of just realize that that was one of the first ones that Needham, you know, put into place based on the kind of quality and location that it had to offer and kind of that attractiveness to the town. It's been successful. People love to go to that establishment, and I wish you continued success at that location.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep the same operation what Chris is running right now, so I'm not thinking to change anything as operation wise, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. One question I had is, I know that you are going to be the manager, you know, for the property and owning it, correct?
Not for the property.
Oh, sorry, for the, you're going to be owning?
For the business.
Okay, and the manager. So then the day-to-day operations, is that going to be you or a collection of different people?
No, it would be me.
Okay, and then as far as, I assume that there's going to be days that you may not be there or things like that. Do you have an assistant manager or someone who's tip certified and will be there as well? And what does that look like? Just wondering.
Yeah, so like, Chris has few employees to who, who he wants, he'd offer me to, so if you, if I wanted to keep them as the same employees and whatever their roles are, I haven't got that far yet because we weren't in the process of these approvals. So I'm still waiting to meet them and see if there's the right person to fit in my criteria, then I would love to have them more also.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You have a question? As Matt said, you know, we have our history with being a town that has alcohol stores here is relatively recent history. And we do take it quite seriously. And I, we encourage you as an establishment to be willing to card everybody. So that is up to you to decide how you're going to handle it. But overcarding is something this board will back you up on any day of the week.
Anybody walks in has to have IDs.
Okay.
That's the policy, yeah.
Many members on this board have underage children.
Many?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Section 15 Alcohol License Transfer Application submitted by Leonos Liquors, Inc., doing business as Needham Center Fine Wines, including the appointment of our Lockamer Patel as manager of record, and so approve for the application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second.
I will note, this is a public hearing, so I should double check to be sure. Is there any member of the public who's here who wishes to comment? If there's not, and no further discussion? Anybody online? Okay. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome to Needham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would welcome a motion on consent.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, can I amend that motion to also include appointments?
And appointments, yes, please. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is passed. All right. Public hearing on our tax classification. So if I can welcome our assessors, to the extent that they can move. And I think we have Melissa online this evening.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you all. If you want to just start by introducing everybody.
Arthur Zorres.
I'm David Davidson. Very cool.
Great.
And we have listed them off. They're online.
Wonderful. So this is something that we are required to do annually. It's an important part of our setting of our tax rate, and so I'm going to turn it over.
To the chairman.
All right. This is the assessor's report for fiscal year 2023. The first six months of 2022 saw some changes in the makeup of the assessor's office going forward into fiscal year 2023 and beyond. Melissa Moda took over as a director of assessing in mid-July and hit the ground running to implement some of the valuation changes that have been researched by her predecessor after review of the calendar 2021 sales market. Tear-down land sales over the past several years triggered a major change in land values. Has been the case over the last five years. Sale prices of lots intended for reconstruction of new homes has once again outpaced the assessed value of those lots. A detailed study of each of the 23 designated land neighborhoods that make up the town of Needham was undertaken to determine how far the current values have been left behind by recent market activities. Valuation adjustments were made to each of these neighborhoods to bring them into compliance with the statistical standards acceptable to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. A major focus of the DOR review focuses on the fact that current proposed values must reflect prior year market activity within a certain statistical parameter that have been established. Needham residents' value must be within 10% of what the sales market is showing. In this case, for calendar 2021 transactions, the second part of the recalibrated fiscal year 2023 values was adjustments to the valuation table that determined the cost attributed to the building portion of the equation. Construction labor material costs have risen considerably in the last few years. These two factors are the prime movers that have kept the market on the rise and are reflected in the increased residential assessments for fiscal year 23. Commercial property owners have reported fairly even income and expenses for this year. These numbers are used to determine commercial property values resulting in relatively modest commercial property increases. Any lingering effects from the prior year COVID concessions seem to have faded into insignificance. Residential new growth has remained relatively stable for fiscal year 23 with a slight drop due part, due in part to the fewer condo starts, but commercial and industrial growth ticked up slightly. New growth in the business personal property realm was back to its normal range after a significant jump in fiscal year 22 due to the one-time utility infrastructure project. The use of our two-growth collection vendors once again proved beneficial in gathering data necessary, data necessary to calculate these important components of the tax levy. As you see in the town stats excerpts in the materials our office provided for this meeting, the residential sales in calendar 2022 have been very solid thus far. These sales will be used to calculate property values for fiscal year 24. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Where do we want to start this evening? I will note that we have had an email from a citizen in town just inquiring again, noting the difference in rates, that we do have a shifted rate in Needham, which results in higher tax costs, property tax costs for commercial businesses. That is a choice that the town made many, many years ago. It is a choice that's always open to us at this hearing, so I will put it out there. We have thus far maintained that shift. It benefits our residential property owners, and that has been, I think, broader feedback from the town, and it has not felt, I understand the significant burden to the commercial property owners, but it has not been an impediment actually to attracting them to Needham at this point. Would be my observation. People may feel differently. Questions?
Yeah. Quickly, how many years have we been at this rate, you know, maintain it at this rate? With this split, the shift, the shift, thank you.
The, Madam Chair, the shift, the town has had a shift in the property tax from residential properties to commercial properties starting in 1988. In terms of what we refer to the maximum shift that's allowed and help identify the factor that was approved last year, which had a shift of 175. What that means to the layperson is it, the amount of property taxes that the commercial sector pays, and the commercial sector consists of commercial properties, industrial properties, and the personal property, properties that, that the town can shift, change their tax burden from 100% of their share to 175% of their share. And that is the basis of then taking whatever that total tax amount to be raised, which this year, if the board were to elect to maintain the same shift, that would be approximately $39 million of the total tax levy of 172 million would be paid by the commercial sector. That amount is divided by their values to determine their tax rate. The board of, of the select board does not decide the numeric number of the tax rate. It's not like, well, I want to do it 15, or I want to do it 14, I want to do it 60. What you're voting for is how much of a shift of taxes from residential property will be shifted onto the commercial. That is the only authority that the board has. In terms of the total tax levy, that's town meetings jurisdiction, or town meeting decides the budget. And in the case of the board of assessors, the board of assessors are making the determination of what your property value is based upon the requirements under Prop 2.5 and the subbury decision. And that's there also. There are three distinct entities. They have three distinct roles, and then it's all verified and reviewed and approved by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, all right.
I might note for Cindy that that would be another good explainer if we want to cut that little part. Thank you, Jay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to follow up on that, and thank you for all the calculations. And the one I always focus on is if we were a single-rate community, because it does show how much of the subsidy, and thank you to our businesses for that large subsidy. But if we were a single-rate community, then we'd be looking at a $14.61 per thousand rate, where I think under your proposal, would it be $12.50 somewhere in that, that neighborhood with the shift? So, or actually 13.04, 13.04, thank you. So you're looking at, you know, substantial savings for the residential taxpayer. And again, thanks to the business for that subsidy. So thanks for all this work.
And, Madam Chair, to put that in numbers, the average single-family home tax bill, if the board were to adopt the same ship, would realize the reduction, are realizing a reduction of $1,750 from their tax bill, or a 10, 10 and a 3/4% savings. So every property in town, and whether it's below the average or above the average, their tax bill is 10 and 3/4% less than it would be if the town maintained a single rate.
That matters over time, for sure. Marcus, did you have a question? We did not. Um. Right, lost my page. Question. I don't know if I got it marked. Um, I know what it is. So based on, on what you've told us, because of the prices of the underlying land, I know that we have this on occasion. We can expect once again that people who live in houses, who have lived in them for an extended period of time, right, that they will again expect to see probably increased property taxes greater than they might otherwise anticipate. Has there been, but I guess that's only if there's been a reassessment this year of some properties that hasn't been done universally, so.
I would think so. I mean, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but if we want to allow Melissa to speak, there's a possibility she may have something to add to this.
Okay, because I know frequently we will hear from people then who, who live in that situation. It sounds like this has been one of those years, and I'm just thinking, the price of lots, right? Again, the price of lots that developers are paying is up a significant amount this year compared to last year. Once again, so that would be reflected in property taxes. Melissa, do you, can you add anything to that or reflect the number of people who will see increases who might be in that situation?
Sure. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry that I couldn't be there in person tonight. So we value all of the property based on sales, in this case, the sales of 2021. So the average increase for residential is 6.93% in tax increase over last year. The increase in value is about 9.63% over last year.
All right. In every year, what I will say is there are winners and losers. And so as people discover that they have seen their taxes increase by some amount that they think is greater than normal, there is somebody else who is being very quiet, who has actually seen their taxes not increase or maybe even go down on occasion relative to what is normal. So altogether, it's coming up to a total budget, as, as Mr. Davidson indicated, that is in fact limited by property 2 and a half, Proposition 2.5 plus the factor for new growth that essentially sets the overall amount that it goes up in town.
And Madam Chair, if I may, we look at every single property every year. So we essentially start from scratch as far as the value goes and recalculate every single property each year. So it's not as if we're looking at certain ones this year and certain ones next year. We literally look at every single of the parcels, over 10,000 parcels. And that's done, as I said earlier, based on, for residential, based on the sales. And it's also based on the cost of reproducing each property or each building, I should say, and the cost based on, on sales, the, the increased cost of the land itself. So we're looking at those three factors in order to come up with these values. And as I said, each one is done in detail every single year. It literally takes us all year to come up with these values and get to this point. And we have detailed information about each particular property, and we use a, a statistical process that's outlined by the Department of Revenue to look at all the sales and evaluate the changes, and then extrapolate that data onto the entire group of properties. So it's a process that's distinctly different from what would happen, for instance, if you get an appraisal when you purchase a property, that's a totally different process that's used there. Or if you go to refinance your property, again, that's different. The value that your insurance company comes up with to, to base your property insurance on is a different way. We use what's called mass appraisal, and it's very detailed process, it's highly regulated by the state, and they audit us in great detail every year. And this year was no exception. So, so that's how we come up with the process itself.
Thank you. Did you want to ask?
I'll do somebody on the hands.
Somebody with a hand raised. Okay. If there's no further questions from the board, then let's bring over Mr. Sherman.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for not being there in person, and I apologize for my tardiness. The, I wanted to, first of all, I've never, in 15 years as a property owner here, I've never seen my property taxes go down. But that's not actually what I wanted to comment about. I was hoping to get a, a comment in on the general public comment period. Have I missed my opportunity for that for the evening?
You did, Mr. Sherman. It is always the first item on our agenda, so we have already covered that this evening. We will be meeting again on the 20th. You are welcome if you can be there then. And please just let the town manager's office know if you would like to attend for that.
Okay, I apologize for interrupting the flow then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands? No. Any further comments from anybody? If there are not, then I would actually welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we retain the same shift as last year. Move that the select board establishes the residential factor of .8928 for the purposes of setting the fiscal year 2023 tax rates.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for all the work. And I know that you often speak to taxpayers in town about their particular situations, and with questions they have, we appreciate the work you do all year.
So I wanted to thank, I know you're not with us tonight, but I wanted to thank Chip.
Oh, yes, yes, that was, that was, yes, absolutely.
He's been a great help for me too, because when I got into this just a few years ago, everything was so new to me. And he was good in explaining things in layman's terms.
He was a tremendous asset he needed for a long time.
He sure was.
And did it in a very nice way. I mean, you can't overemphasize just the way, the way he dealt with people was very nice and made things go easier.
Yeah, definitely.
For the board for nearly two years after saying I had to talk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
That brings us to our town manager's report.
First item is a proposed appointment protocol revision, which is an item that Miles will handle. This is an item on the select board's goals for FY '22.
Thank you, Miles.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we are looking forward to getting our appointments protocol regularized to match our practice.
Yes, and I am excited to be here again, talking policies and protocols. From propane to appointments. I love this. I truly do. But yeah, today we're here to talk about the proposed revision to the appointment protocol, which, as you mentioned, helps to formalize some of the norms that the board has practiced over the years, as well as to update the specific protocol that is published at this time to improve the clarity of the process, to codify the interview procedures, to allow for flexibility in how some of the vacancies are advertised, as well as introducing a process for appointment of select board members to other boards, committees, and commissions. A summary of the protocol, just as a refresher, is that the select board, either directly or in conjunction with other bodies, appoints members to other boards, commissions, and committees. And the protocol exists to provide transparency to members of this board, to other boards and committees, and to the public on how the vacancies are filled, since these are residents who primarily fill these. To summarize some of the changes, the first general section is notification of vacancies. The proposed policy instructs the town manager to ensure that staff and processes exist to advertise the vacancies while removing some dated, some dated prescriptive requirements to include the current policy saying that vacancies need to be posted in newspaper and that the board will be notified via its weekly packet. The current process that we use to advertise is that we advertise on the website, social media, and via The current process that we use to advertise is that we advertise on the website, social media and via the newsletter. And current vacancies are updated on the site upon each appointment. So every time this board appoints someone, uh, we take the vacancy off. Anytime we're notified by the town clerk that a vacancy exists, we put them up. Uh, this proposed policy also codifies the interview process. The biggest change here is it requires interviews for all applicants. The current protocol states that any, all or none of the applicants may be interviewed. The draft policy states that, um, all applicants shall be interviewed. It also invites committee chairs to sit in on the interviews, which is not currently stated in the, in the protocol. That's a practice that's been ongoing and it's been, I think, highly successful, at least from the feedback I've gotten from, um, you, Madam Chair, and, uh, Marcus, uh, in that process over the past two years. Sets timeline, uh, for the notification of recommended appointment. Right now, again, this is a norm. The norm's been approximately two weeks prior to, um, the meeting that the recommended appointee would be voted upon. That hasn't always been practiced. This sets a seven day requirement for notification and that gives this board a chance to speak to the vice chair. Um, if they have concerns over the appointment or to reach out to the town manager to request that the item be moved from the appointment calendar to a regular agenda item for discussion. It also, uh, as I mentioned, codifies the process by which select board members can be appointed to other committees. And again, this is formalizing a norm and it provides a process for if there are no volunteers or if there is not a consensus, um, on the appointment. And the final changes are clarity and administrative in nature. It moves away from a narrative style protocol to a more bulletized, um, sort of succinct format and replaces the term selectmen with selectboard. That's the summary and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I've kind of a nitpicky. Don't you love nitpicky people? Um, and I understand changing it to will interview and I understand giving everyone their fair shake. I just, maybe I'd put qualified. I actually remember when I was vice chair, someone didn't live in Needham and they were, they applied and we interviewed them and kind of find during the process, I think it slipped up. Like, oh, by the way, you know, when I commute to Needham, it's like, whoa, whoa, you have to be a Needham resident. So I just, just because someone, I, I just would want to make sure that the applications are in order. Um, and then of course, if you want to interview all of them, that's, we can put that in there. So there was just maybe saying qualified or, or in order or something of that nature. I know it's nitpicky, but, um, the idea of will, you know, I do understand that. Um, and then I, I think it's been a practice pretty much to confer with, you know, the, the chair of the other committee. So to codify that is a good idea. So thanks for your work.
Um, so Matt, I do note that item number one does say the appointment of a qualified.
Yeah, look at that. I was jumping to two.
So I do think it's in there.
We are good. Thank you. I was focused on it. Thank you.
Um, I, I thought the language actually was not, uh, clear in item two, where it says the vice chair will also invite the chair of the committee to which the applicant seek appointment. So I think we're meaning that we're inviting the chair of the committee to join the interview, to participate in the interviews, um, not to be administrative support, which was kind of what I got to when I kept reading. Um, so, so I just want to be clear on that. Um, it did occur to me to wonder, and I, I just opened this up as a question to the board. Uh, we have been interviewing all applicants for vacancy. Is there any maximum number of applicants that would cause us to rethink that? I mean, I don't know. I know that in, in the case of the climate committee, we had a lot of applicants and we did interview them all, but, um, you know, I just, I think, ask the committee.
Yeah. Uh, I think from speaking and doing it now, I think having too many isn't really a problem because things change and circumstances change. So to have options and more people to go back to in case something were to happen and we found out we wanted someone and then circumstances changed and like, oh, we have to go back to that person or, um, I know it seems tedious, but also it's a way for us to kind of get to know more people in the community. I've, I've enjoyed that a lot, just talking and, and learning about, you know, how long they've been in Needham, you know, what interests are and things like that. I think it's just another way of having an opportunity to, uh, build a relationship with the community as they're interviewing, as they're asking questions and things like that. So is, as many as there have been, I don't feel like it's something that is, um, a detriment to have more than not enough. But other people chime in.
Doesn't seem like it would be too often that we would have too many volunteers.
We could hope. The, the goal is having more than we need.
Yes.
That's really the goal, to be honest.
Yeah.
Um, and I do completely agree with you, Marcus, that, that there were certainly people who I met through that process, who I may not have thought were right for that committee, but then I knew about them for something else to encourage them there. Um, I also wondered if in the policy procedure document, if, if there's some value in putting something about timeline in there that we would actually recommend starting the process to look at upcoming vacancies or to understand upcoming vacancies, maybe in the spring, just as part of, you know, so that we know sort of where the vacancies will be coming from, um, and to kick that off, because that is step number one.
I think that's in the SOP.
Yeah.
Well, is that now what we have here?
This is your policy. The SOP is how we, um, implement it in the office, like the times and the dates. We can share that.
So I was looking at kind of this procedury part.
That, that, I believe is the older protocol, which is a bit more prescriptive of how these shall be done. Whereas the new, uh, protocol, the draft protocol recommends or mandates that the town manager ensure that adequate staff support, um, is provided. And, um, there is a draft SOP that I am working on that I would hope to have for the board's next look at this. Um, just didn't want to provide that without providing or taking into consideration the feedback presented at this meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. We believe that there should be a target date for starting, so.
Absolutely.
Again.
Madam Chair, sorry to go back on this. One says that the appointment is someone who's qualified. So if you come to the board and you meet the criteria, you're appointing. Two, it doesn't say that an applicant, in my opinion, for the vacancy. So if you're looking for an architect on a board, someone could put an application in and say, you know, give me a chance. And I think the way I read it, you would have to interview them. So I just, I would like to tie one into, one has to make sure that they qualify, um, as a member of the community. But I just want, I would like to just tighten up to a little more. So if someone puts their application in and it's not what you're looking for or something else, you would have to be able to deny that. However you do it and would be, it's up to you, but I do see a difference there. And maybe I'm just reading it too. Someone else might too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We did have, uh, an applicant who wasn't a US citizen at one point, which was required. So it's an example of.
Yes.
These are the questions.
Thank you.
Well, and we, we certainly do have certain roles that have requirements tied to the role, um, where, where I would expect applicants to be qualified. But I would not want qualified to be subjective. So as long as we understand what qualified means, um.
So, absolutely. And it does make sense. We have had a few applicants in just the short time I've been in my role, um, who are not Needham residents or who may be applying for a vacancy. But that vacancy, for example, in the Council of Economic Advisers, which has a vacancy for a large business owner in Needham, if anyone is watching, um, we have had applicants for the CDA, but they do not meet the qualifications for the vacancy.
Right. Thanks, Miles.
Any other comments?
Thank you for this.
I've had a question about the US citizenship. So hypothetically, if someone has lived in Needham 20 years, overly qualified and wants to help, if they're not a US citizen, they can't be.
The particular vacancy was in a, filling an elected seat, which did require.
Oh, okay. But in general, that is not an end all be all hypothetically. Okay. I just wanted to be sure and clarify that.
It was a requirement for that one.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Which, as Mr. Riley said, is another example of the board found that out at.
Instead of.
We'll work.
Thank you.
That what you need?
Yes, absolutely. Because we'll be back next week, next meeting.
Next week.
We won't be back here next week. We hope. All right. Um.
Dave and Katie, do you want to come up and keep going on all of our capital? So, um, in November, we talked to the board about the capital policies and we reviewed, um, how they had been implemented and, um, interpreted. And the board did have several questions about whether some pieces of them were still relevant. So we, um, as part of that conversation, we have several items that we're recommending that the board consider, um, amending the policies at your meeting on the 20th to be included in the capital, uh, plan for the year. This is our time to do it, so we went to get that out. Um, just looking first at the capital improvement policies under A, number one. Um, we are, we, we do recommend that items to be considered capital not be limited to 25,000. In fact, we're going to be recommending 50,000, but that's actually a bylaw change. That number's in the bylaw. So we will be recommending to you a bylaw change that would increase that 25,000. And then next year, we'll update the capital plan, um, if the town meeting approves that.
So it would be at least 50,000, is what you.
Yes.
Okay.
Then under the capital improvement fund, um, Dave came in to talk to us about how, um, the focus on this one really has evolved over the last, uh, I guess, 19 years, 18 years to be focused on equipment. And so the, the amendments are to show that. And also to take out, and I think board members raised, you know, just, or any, this is really required that if you're on the plan for that many years or, um, uh, you know, on the plan and not funded. So, uh, we are recommending some changes there, um, as long as the, they have been identified. That's what we're recommending. In the debt service stabilization fund under E1, just adding the notion that the debt service stabilization fund is, um, really part of our long-term capital plan. So we want to make sure that we're all thinking about that in the context of our long-term capital facilities, particularly as we're looking now at Mitchell and Pollard. So that, just to make that more clear, the, um, one that's immediately helpful for us is under the debt management policies, six and seven, increasing the, um, limit on which reallocation of the balances can either be closed off to free cash or brought back to town meeting. It's currently a 5,000, which is very low. Um, and we're proposing 25,000. And then the, our policy has been over the last few years that we wouldn't recommend, um, items to be financed from, uh, debt under, um, less than 100,000. It's really 250,000 is what we're thinking. In fact, I, it's fairly rare that even 250 would, uh, be something that we would be recommending, um, recently, but upping that 100,000 to 250 at this point. So we're looking at. Dave, did you want to add anything to the explanation for those?
Other than updating, uh, in, in terms of the debt management policies, these specific recommendations are more administrative in nature and, um, are reflective of the change in the cost. And, um, in inflation, $5,000 when the policy was created in 1991 certainly, uh, is a de minimis amount. And the advantage is by increasing that amount is it will cut down certainly in accounting time and effort to keep us each capital project to separate fund. And therefore it also adds to cost to our annual audit as we have to keep them open because we're not allowed to close them out by our policy. It's not by state law, but by policy and the rating agencies want to ensure that you can keep to your policies. That's one of the measures they look at for good management. Hence why we would like to update this.
And the other, um, byproduct is that if we have to reallocate them all at town meeting, we have to put all of the article numbers and it gets long and kind of tedious.
The only benefit I could see of having, you know, closing that town meeting. So I think town meeting members see that like, oh, things are closing out and they get, sort of, I think they get a sense how things are winding down.
That can certainly still be reported.
It can be, yes. So I'm not saying we.
It actually is. The town manager's presents a report on all actions of town meeting and describes, uh, and they describe, for instance, the purchase price for a piece of equipment and closing out. It's not that town meeting closes them out. It's town meeting voting to reappropriate the funds. And that just adds to the accounting time and such.
Okay.
But it's good.
No, and I see your point though. Admittedly, this makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um, Dave, could you just describe the finance committee? I know there are members, uh, there are members of the finance committee that went over this. I'm just wondering where it goes, if we're going to present it to them after we vote them, assuming we're going to vote next meeting on this. I love, love the suggestion, so I'm all on board. I just didn't know as far as including them on, on our thought process.
The, on the special stabilization funds, these, uh, we're done working with the subcommittee of the finance committee. And, uh, I presented to the committee as well as the members of the subcommittee to the full finance committee. And they were, um, supportive of, of the concept. I did state that we would be coming to the select board, uh, to have the board formally take action on these items. And, uh, some of the changes that you see that are being recommended, uh, came from ideas from members of the, of the finance committee. So, uh, they were involved. Um, and as I said, these are more minor in nature. Uh, the broader discussion that may, uh, ensue relative to the debt service stabilization fund will come once we have the facility financing plan and looking out of our capital investment in the hor- horizon of 10, 15 years.
Could I add, Mr. Riley, that we did send these, um, proposals to the finance committee last week in case they have any feedback and they said they would get back to us if they did.
Great. Thank you.
Did they participate also in the discussion of the language in the debt service stabilization fund?
The, uh, discussions specific to this, uh, no, uh, this is, uh, technically grammar changes. That's the discussion that we're going to have after the facility financing plan because we're envisioning that the, the purpose and structure of this fund may change, uh, based upon some, uh, recommendations that will be coming to the select board in the coming weeks with the facility financing plan update. And that was the time that, uh, the same concepts would be presented to the finance committee and they understood that.
Okay. Similarly, did they participate in the discussion of the debt management policies with a couple of recommended changes there?
They were wondering if there was changes, uh, where we were, if there was some discussion changes for the three and five percent, which we're not addressing at this point, uh, these particular items, at least, uh, uh, a couple of members have spoken with me. They didn't seem troubled by it and understood it. But I will probably be, uh, speaking to the committee tomorrow night, uh, on this, uh, topic. Yeah, hence, uh, the board is not voting tonight. Finance committee actually has two meetings before, uh, this board would be taking action. And if, if there were any, uh, comments or concerns from the finance committee, you would hear them prior to your meeting on the 20th.
I'm sure with any financial changes, they'll probably have questions.
So, so we'll get some feedback for sure.
Any further questions? Um, I appreciate the work that's been done to, to bring these, uh, make them more current and therefore hopefully more useful for all of us. So, uh, create less work for the right kind of, right level of work. Um, I'm also, uh, satisfied not to see the change to the 10%, the 3%.
Yes. It's not a change.
Right, no, not an administrative change. All right. And so the next item, last, at your last meeting, we went over in some detail the FY24 capital of items which constitute the capital budget. And then this document that you have tonight, and Dave was kind enough to print it out in special paper and bigger font, shows the five-year plan for FY24 through FY28 with the tier one recommendations. As a reminder, um, our recommendations under tier one are those that we're recommending in, in today's world, for the capital budget for FY24, they're likely to be the ones that we're recommending to you for final in the warrant. Um, for those in the future, this is what we're thinking based on, uh, Dave's estimate of revenue and for, available for appropriation. So there are oftentimes tier two items that are not recommended or sometimes there are amounts in a larger item that are teaching.
So we might be able to only afford three million of a three and a half million dollar investment portion of it would be tier two. The, the, many of these items reflect the fact that we've talked about every time we meet is that things cost more. Um, so that some, some of the items have, have gone up significantly. And I would just note that, um, there are one or two that we may be recommending to the board um, to, at some point, to move into the ARPA funding because there, um, we just need to get them moved faster. And one of those that we're still looking at is whether we could get the library chiller replacement done faster because we're just very worried that the chiller isn't going to be able to chill the library this summer. And we don't really have good options for moving the library programs and services out of the library. So you may hear back from us on, um, allocating some ARPA money for that. But right now it remains in the capital plan funded through cash. Dave, did you have anything you particularly wanted to focus on?
Just, uh, one thing I want to bring to the board's attention, specific to tier one recommendations for FY24 under the. under the Water Enterprise Fund. There's an item for $34,000 for Child's River Water Treatment Plant. That did not appear in the report to the, to the board last meeting. That was an omission on my part of not doing the proper copy and pasting. So it was missed. It was, has been recommended by the town manager to be Tier One and to be funded, but I had accidentally omitted it. And hence, it is now in the plan showing up here. So the final plan would also have it. And this is a advantage to doing the two-step process because how I realized I had omitted it is because I knew that 378,000 was Tier One in 2025. And I don't know how we could do that if we didn't do the first part, which is the 34,000.
That might not have worked if we decided not to put that in there.
Yes.
It was a good catch.
Heidi, did you have anything?
I had no, no opening comments. Thanks.
So I know that we have heard from, again, a couple of constituents related to the Quiet Zone Safety Upgrades. Those are in the plan as the Select Board had them in our goals this year to start that work. Along with many, many other items that are needed on a routine basis. Any questions from the board related to particular items?
So just looking at the Quiet Zone being funded because it's in, is that the pink?
That's the pink for funded by debt.
Correct.
So, okay, for those years and then going up to that as well. And one more question. As far as the school technology, do we know? I'm just thinking about that FY24 to 25 that, you know, the 200,000 dollar increase. Is there a big reason for that? I know, I'm just kind of just looking across the board as if you would know that, Dave, or is that something to talk to them about? The first page.
Correct. And, and yes, it's based upon their retirement schedules and and, and they do give a, a bigger breakdown in the detailed pages.
130 pages.
Yes. But what was driving that was an increase in the Yes, the paging. The announcement.
Right. I mean, updating that, that technology.
Yes. Yes. And that cost is, is more.
Okay.
And that's the only, and that's the only change to the 25 amount from that, which last year they were saying they were looking for in 2025.
Okay.
And we were recommending the full amount as Tier One last year for 25, and we're still recommending plus the additional 81,000 that they requested as Tier One.
Okay. And then the, the phase of the playground renovation, is that 35,000 for the study? And then the implementation from the study is the 400,000 for that? For buildings and facilities?
Yes, that's there. That's just a preliminary estimate that those numbers are not as solid as, certainly on the equipment side, because as I say, study, they may find that their need of investment in playground equipment and such in, and for the perimeter, might be more and might be less. So that number might change, but they were trying to give a sense of magnitude of what the study may lead us to.
So do, do we think that 35 initially for FY24 may not be enough? Or we think?
For, for the study.
Okay, the study is fine with the 35. Okay, but the 400, we're not sure. Got it. We'll know more probably at the end of that. Okay.
Correct.
And then you can see they've laid out sort of the series of study and playground going out at least a couple of years. I don't know that there's an order that they have in mind yet, but we'll see.
But I think probably the committee that we're forming will help kind of tell us. Action sports. I guess, action sports.
I think that will be ultimately up to Park Some Recreation. Yeah.
And but the study should assist them.
Some of that, yeah, should be very helpful with that committee.
They may find that something is in greater need to be addressed earlier than others that, yeah, they may have thought were needed to be repaired. And I guess it's important that, that you're bringing up that is one of the applications going to the CPC
Oh, okay. Consideration for funding. So there's a possibility they may be able to kind of help offset some of that funding. Not all of it, or all of it.
That's our request.
Requested all of it. Okay.
It's the CPC's decision.
Exactly. So it's potentially could, they could do that.
Yes.
Kate, this line on traffic improvements. We've talked with, we will be bringing back to the board the revised structure for our transportation committees, but we sort of talked about one committee having, I think your words were their own, their own version of a TIF to work with as they're working with people in Needham. I'm presuming that this line related to traffic improvements is improvements that are determined within DPW that the, the idea of a TIF for the, the new TMAC would be more of a
These were, these were the TMAC items. These are, you know, geometric changes, things other than signs. So this is
So this is that. Yeah. So this has been the regular funding that's been, that they have access through DPW.
Yeah. So more regular, regular bread and butter is DPW. You know, you put it, that we meet the warrant for a stop sign, the stop sign comes through. But if they want to change the way that an intersection rounds at the, near a school like at Elliott, that would be a TMAC recommendation. Or whatever the new TMAC becomes. Come through this. Okay.
So just not entirely clear on how this is distributed. So, under equipment and technology, there's a line that says Center at the Heights Facility Enhancements. And is that related to the space study that we're doing now? So I guess I'm curious. There's, there's nothing allocated for that. So is that because that would be a separate outside of the budget?
And so we have that and also the library space study. So because those studies are still in process and we don't have costs associated with them, they weren't submitted with costs attached, but, you know, we want to know that they're coming so that they reflect on this list because we know that when the study has, yeah, it's a placeholder.
Okay.
Yeah.
Presumably next year, they'll be done.
Okay. So nothing's going to be done till then. So we'll be fine with not having to go back and ask for anymore because there's nothing there. You know what I mean? Like what, what, what Heidi, what I think she's saying is the fact that there's nothing there, but if we needed something, well, we'd have to go back to a different source or something like that before we could get that. Or if we include that now, does that help us later in the sense of some, some kind of line or some kind of money or hypothetical money is in the budget?
It just lets you know that next year that we'll be asking for it so that it's not a surprise. So we have something called a future form and we know that we're going to be asking for funding, but we don't know what yet. So that there's a line there, but there would be no, we haven't started the library study. There would be no way we would be asking for money.
Okay. It's not even ready for, not even close.
Forgive me. So just like on process. So I understand that there's the everyday continuous budget items that are funded within the budget. And then there's other items that are funded outside of the budget by warrant articles by appropriation.
Right. These are all by appropriation, but
These are all by appropriation. Everything on this sheet is
All this will show up at town.
Yeah. Okay. It's just.
Could I try, could I try? So all of the cash items, generally speaking, will be in one article.
Okay.
So, and it'll list out, you know, this fire truck and this, whatever they are.
Yeah, which we've seen it.
Articles that require borrowing have their own articles because they have to be done a certain way. And then some things like fleet refurbishment, they filed it in the capital plan, but we've said it's actually a warrant article because it's maintenance. So yes, that's a separate warrant article.
Okay.
And then there's one more category of CPA items would be into
Because there are many different reasons why things are warrant articles.
Yes.
I mean, it's not just the funding source. It's discretionary or not. I mean, people want a chance to have their say on things like the library study. It's not a requirement as opposed to school furniture, which I understand we're also approving, but it
Studies are a little different. We've, 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 we actually have a, the study hasn't, we have a new plan on studies. Last year, we had a study, one of the studies was in the capital plan and one of them was in a warrant article, which was frankly confusing for everybody, not just town meeting, but us. So we're looking at where studies should end up.
Okay.
And it probably won't be in cash capital. It would be a separate article.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that's my, my question is like studies versus
Things.
Things. Potential versus needs. I don't know. Anyway, yes.
Just to further add to it, there are different purposes of studies. Studies that may lead to an investment in a capital asset, which is what this is suggesting, is, is considered capital by the town's bylaws and is required to be done by the Permanent Public Building Committee. So that's why it's here. The request they've identified is today advocates for the Center at the Heights will be seeking funding for a study to look at that facility in 2025. They don't have essentially a scope or magnitude of what the study would be, so they didn't have a placeholder amount to put in there. But what we always ask is if you have something that the, that a board or a department is wishing anticipates will be advocating for in the future year, it's better to get it into the plan. So people are aware that there are other projects that will be competing against the known items. And that helps us make better decisions in terms of planning, in terms of what we can afford to fund. Because if we're not aware that there's, let's say there's an improvement at a major facility and we're making recommendations on funding another facility, doing that in a vacuum does not serve the town in, in the long run well. So that's why you will see studies in here, or you'll see a capital request that does no amount. They just want, make sure it's on everybody's radar.
For the heads up. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. And just to that end, you know, these things, we've seen things move forward like the Quiet Zone. We've seen things drop off when it gets further along. And of course, even before the warrant, they might come in and we say, you know what? That study doesn't make much sense, even though it's in our capital plan. Let's either defer it or get rid of it. So we have many opportunities to kind of challenge and question. But right now it's the roadmap of what we're thinking as a town as we move throughout the years. But I just had a question on the fire apparatus because there are big numbers. And I know sometimes we'll fund it through cash, right? But clearly, that's not a possibility. It looks like
What page are you on, Matt?
There should be five of nine.
Okay.
Under So you have the Quint, I think, close to 2 million and the Cyclone million. Hoping, I know we have developments come up. We've had in the past been able to use some of those development dollars. Maybe not for these two. They're very, you know, short term, but get some development dollars to help with those public safety measures. I know we did it down where we did the Needham Crossing and we're able to get some supplemental funding for those big items. But these numbers, I remember when a fire engine was one, a million or something close to that even a couple of years ago. So definitely understand it's needed with the, the year of the vehicle. I'm just hoping we can, I guess in the future, think about getting some of that money to help with, to offset that cost as we do with infrastructure. So big numbers, but you would say that typically we like to fund that with cash. It's just clearly not possible with those numbers, right?
Yes, particularly with the ladder truck. That's been in the plan for seven years. And every year it's been shown as debt. That's, that's basically our annual fleet investment number by itself.
Yeah.
So, and certainly if we had an extraordinary amount of one-time monies, these are the sort of things that we would have the board consider changing from debt financing to cash.
Yeah.
But this, this number has been has been in the plan as debt. And, and you're not incorrect. The actual warrant article would be a standalone warrant article will be for $2 million even for that number, just because the incidental cost associated with the equipment. And the timeline of getting this equipment is 18, 24 months now.
At least we don't have to customize it to fit in the garage for the other trucks. So we're ahead of the game there. Thank you.
I wonder if it makes sense for things like the Quint to think about doing again, another, you know, fund that where maybe it makes sense to accumulate that steadily over time. Have we ever considered doing that?
We, we did. And then it got all stalled several years ago when we were trying to put monies into the CIF. And that's when we stopped putting money into it because people didn't understand because, well, a fire truck will never be $2 million and you'll have the money to do it. And now, well, now we don't have the money. And yes, it is $2 million. So to that point. And
I would have, I support thinking about that again, I guess. I know we've seen it before, but
But to the point, that was like one of the things that the, working with the subgroup from the Finance Committee is talked about, well, probably a good target for that fund would be the two most expensive pieces of equipment. So perhaps by the time there's one out there in 2028 that we're currently showing is debt financing. By that time, we might actually be able to pay cash from the fund.
From the fund. Okay. That would be great. Thank you for helping us to think ahead. Yes, I think that's important. Any other questions for Dave and Katie?
Thank you.
We have two more weeks.
Right. There's still time. More questions can come. Okay. Thank you. And now we're going to review budget priorities. Is the season?
Is the season. Yes. So the budget priorities help guide particularly the operating budget, but also the capital budget in some ways. So we've structured these slightly differently this year based on the goal categories that the board has adopted so that you'll see that these reflect the seven major goal categories. And we pulled out from what I, what I believe are the items that specifically would require appropriation of funds. So many of the goals are things that we're doing that are either policy or they're projects, but for instance, identifying a modernized phone system for the Free Public Library and other town buildings, which is something that the board heard a lot about from the library. That's something that, you know, we're looking to invest in. Quiet Zone feasibility, that's something that you're looking to invest in. Another one that we talked a lot about is the Employee Recruitment Retention Initiatives. These are things that we'll be requesting that the board consider including in the operating budget under our budget proposal. And again, as we've talked about for the last four years, the incorporation of the Public Information Officer position. So those are examples in your goals that are actually funding requirements that we've pulled out here. So again, this is a preview and welcome any comments and feedback now or now and we can write.
And will these budget priorities similarly be shared with the Finance Committee when you're talking to them?
These actually end up in your recommended budget.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Just two things. This is a little bit off when we talk about multimodal transportation. I was reading how Newton has that Nemo is expanding it. We've talked about doing that. So just want to put it on our radar about trying to fund something.
We have an earmark.
Okay.
And we just signed the contract. So I signed a contract with the state. And this, I know was
Thank you.
So we will be seeking a consultant to feasibility or whether it makes sense. I actually just saw, listened to a call yesterday that Nemo is expanding.
Expanding. Exactly. Right.
Uh, Nemo, I think, you know, catchier.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we'll be, so we'll have that as a study and we'll see where that would end up.
Great. And then I think the second one is I would like to, you know, we talked, the Public Information Officer through the operating budget. I'd like to expand that. I don't know if it's in this year or following to really say like we're looking to have those positions in our operating budget and not through warrant articles.
Do we have anybody else left, Dave?
Just as, even if we have a future position, everything's like piloting. You know, it's like, let's do a two-year pilot on this position. I know as a board, we've thought that's not a great way to, to go about doing business. So again, it could be in out years, but I just want to make sure that that gets incorporated.
I think that's sort of a principle, right? Not a priority. And I don't know.
If you're budgeting, I'm just thinking as you budget, and that's why it might not apply because we already have the PIO, but just as a budget, from a budgeting standpoint. But just as a budget, from a budgeting standpoint, I'd like to see those in the operating. And I think it might be one of our goals, right? Okay.
And Kate, as I recall, that earmark for Nemo is something that comes from the state ARPA funds, right? Wasn't that what ultimately the source was for that, that was funding that? I think when we looked at it, we said, oh, we're sure that's coming because it comes from those funds.
We have the funds for that.
Okay.
Just, I think the rail trail is the ARPA, Sam Chair. I think the Nemo is a FY23 earmark. So we are, we'll be doing an RFP in January.
Awesome.
All right. But we're glad for those sources. Any other questions related to this? Again, you have a moment where if you have more feedback, you can still provide it to the town manager. But soon, they will be voted at our next meeting, right?
So this notion that Select Board budget priorities for FTEs should be incorporated in the operating budget, is that something you want in the budget priorities? Is that something you want to put in your goals for next year?
Maybe because...
Think about it.
Yeah, I'm just maybe because it doesn't apply specifically to this budget year. It would be a goal, but I think if in future budget years, I'd want, if it does, if something does come up.
Yes.
I'd want to put it in.
And I imagine it will at your budgets next year. I've heard several ideas, so.
Yeah, right.
Okay, good.
So as I recall in our goals, we did have some principles in those goals. So maybe this can be something that gets added to those.
Okay. My last item is just to thank everybody on the staff, particularly Amy and Kristen, who put together the amazing event that we had on Sunday for lighting the tree. It was just, it was wonderful. There were so many people there. And I know we want to all move back to the common, but people loved being able to be on all sides of that tent. It was just a wonderful, a wonderful event.
I was going to say, it will be different on the common too, so it'll be interesting to see what it, what it looks like. But it was a lovely event, and I did laugh at one of the after things. I think of the Grinch chasing Rocket. I don't know.
Oh!
That was hysterical, so.
Well, I hope there's a video of that.
It was a video, I think I saw it on Instagram or something, but yeah. Yeah, so it was, it was adorable, but it was a great night. I think that brings us to the board discussion. The first item on the board discussion is, thank you very much, is the report on goal progress. And there I can tell you, the latest thing that happened was that Marcus and I met with the folks from our Historic Commission to talk about establishing a historic district. And I think a number of you know that Mr. Handle is very interested in establishing that for his particular property. It turns out that the process of doing that is more, much more significant than we initially expected. So we are going to need to establish a committee to determine what our process and policies will be as it relates or as it starts headed to this historic district. So there will be sort of a committee to establish the first historic district, and then we'll have a commit, we have to establish a historic district committee at that point. That committee can then take on a subsequent project to think about how it might apply in other areas of the town and to see if the town would be interested in having historic districts in other areas, right? So kind of a two-step process, but it's definitely more, it is a process. And I think we thought originally we could just bring something to town meeting in the spring. That is clearly not going to happen. If we start now, we might get there in the fall, but...
We invited the Historic Commission to come to the meeting on the 20th. We'll have a draft charge and composition. It is, the state does prescribe several of the positions on those.
So, and the state may in fact even provide some names for people to fill certain positions. We'll see if they have an option to do that. Okay. Right, are there any other committee reports this evening? I think I'm aware of any other committees that have met in between. So if there are no more reports or no more news, then I know that Matt would like to get home for dinner.
Make an ice cream by this, by this hour.
So I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Happy birthday to Matt.